Eulencamp, our ditch inspector. And attending in person is Steve Ock, our sheriff. Adam Ossefort, our planning and zoning director. Jackie Yoc, health and human services director. Catherine McIntance, health and human services. Sarah Ogren, human services. Denise Guido, our auditor treasurer. Chris Pelzer, our coordinator. And all commissioners are present. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, is there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
I have none, Mr. Chair.
Okay, any commissioners? Not, motion to approve the agenda as is? Motion by Commissioner Knizel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Newman, discussion? Not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, carried, thank you. Consent items, Denise?
Consent items today are the meeting minute approval for November 30th and December 1st. Gambling permit for Staples Sportsman's Club. Gambling permit for NWTF Strutton Blackbirds. A point child support officer and higher part-time correctional officer.
Okay, you've heard the consent items. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Erickson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker, discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carried, thank you. Denise?
Item I have is the auditor warrants. Background is sent for review. Recommendation is to approve the November 2020 auditor warrants with an ACH and regular manual payment totaling in the amount of $3,982,996.27.
Okay, you've heard the board action, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Newman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Knizel, discussion? If not, roll call please.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Knizel?
Yes.
Commissioner Becker?
Yes.
Commissioner Erickson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kurtcher?
Yes.
The next item I have is the commissioner warrants. Background is sent for review. Recommendation is to approve the commissioner's warrants with an ACH and a regular manual payment totaling in the amount of $84,498.25.
All right, you've heard the board action, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Becker, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Erickson, discussion? Not, roll call please.
Commissioner Becker?
Yes.
Commissioner Erickson?
Yes.
Commissioner Knizel?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Kurtcher?
Yes.
Next item I have is the health and human service commissioner warrants. Background is sent for review. Recommendation to approve the health and human service commissioner warrants with an ACH and a regular manual payment totaling in the amount of $121,777.64.
Okay, you've heard the board action, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Knizel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Newman, discussion? Not, roll call please.
Commissioner Knizel?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Becker?
Yes.
Commissioner Erickson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kurtcher?
Yes.
The next item I have is the health and human service SSIS warrants. Background is sent for review. Recommendation to approve the health and human service SSIS warrants with an ACH and a regular manual payment totaling in the amount of $116,150.5.
Okay, you've heard the board action, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Erickson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. I don't know if you realize this, guys, but it's over here and over there. So...
We try to keep it easy.
Yeah, I know we are.
It has been long.
Use you too much, you know.
Yeah, you're doing good with me, yes.
Poor guy got his neck for...
Yeah. I just listened for this side and that side. So, roll call please.
Commissioner Erickson?
Yes.
Commissioner Becker?
Yes.
Commissioner Knizel?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Kurtcher?
Yes.
Next item I have is the rescinding of a board action for Thunder Lodge. The background on this, Todd County Board of Commissioners adopted the BAF, I'll read the number, but, for the on-sale, off-sale, and Sunday liquor license for Thunder Lodge. The Minnesota Department of Public Safety Alcohol Division has notified the business and Todd County that the business is not eligible for the off-sale portion of their application. The request that was due to provisions of the Minnesota statute 340A.405 subdivision 2E, which limits issuance if the establishment is located less than one mile by the most direct route from the boundary of any statutory or home rule city that has established a municipal liquor store before August 1st, 1991. So we need to rescind this board action for their first application and then you'll see we're bringing in another application as the next board action for the regular on-sale and Sunday liquor.
Well, they have to get the off-sale from the city then, or what?
They can't have.
Can't have. I should have known that.
Yeah, we've had this one before.
Yeah.
What, is that the state thing, the way I'm listening to you say that? So the city has no say in it either? Because I, I mean, back when we owned it, I think we kind of looked into it, but the city can't override that?
Right.
Or can?
I, I'm not sure what the city ordinance is or rulings with the state on this. This is just following the state law.
I don't think they can if they have a municipal liquor store, so... That was done to protect the cities and their municipals.
It's kind of a crappy deal.
Yeah, I know. It's an old law, really.
That's why I wondered if it could be overruled by the cities.
And maybe that's something the city would want to look into.
They'd have to address it, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so you've heard the board action. We need a motion to rescind that former resolution or board action, so...
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Erickson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Newman, discussion? Not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, carried, thank you.
The next board action I have then is Thunder Lodge Incorporated on-sale and Sunday liquor license. And as I just explained in the last one, now they're asking for approval of their application for on-sale and Sunday liquor license for Thunder Lodge, located at 22056 US 71, Long Prairie, Minnesota, Long Prairie Township, effective January 1st, 2021 through March 31st of 2021.
Only three months?
Yeah.
Yes, because they're starting again then in March.
Oh, that's when the new license come out, okay. You're right, okay. All right, you've heard the board action, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Becker, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Knizel, discussion? Not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, carried.
I was going to say, Verndale, they, years ago, they had that one on the highway. They had off-sale, but the city actually owned it at that time, so that's why they...
Yep.
Did do that. Because they had a mid-municipal liquor store in town, then they...
The city owned both of them, right?
The city owned both of them at the time, so that's why.
The next board I have action before you is authorizing the highway easement for the state project 7708-42RW. I brought this at the work session and explained it to you. The background is the state of Minnesota acting through its Department of Transportation has provided documents with interest in purchasing a highway easement interest for their project 7708-42RW located along Highway 71 in Borville, identified as county parcel 30-004-0000. This is currently a tax-forfeited parcel managed by Todd County via the Todd County Auditor Treasurer's Office. Our options are to adopt the attached resolution authorizing signing of the highway easement for the state project or do not adopt the attached resolution. And our recommendation is to adopt the attached resolution authorizing the signing of highway easement for state project 7708-42RW.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Denise, do we have to take it off the tax-forfeited? Because what is, we would sell it in between this time?
We won't, there's, well, there's no sale going on right now.
I mean, is it all tax-forfeited land for sale at all times?
They are.
So...
If, if somebody would be interested in it, we'd have to disclaim that this easement is in effect right now. If they wanted to buy it, we've, it's been on there for years and there's never been any interest. Never had for 15 years of any interest, but...
But do we get paid for this?
$500.
Yeah.
They're doing, they're doing a $500...
CEDR.
Okay.
Because they're going to take a chunk of it and change the land and use that.
You're right.
Then they're also asking for that temporary, so they could just temporarily lose the location and they're not paying us for that portion of it, so...
Okay, you see no problem with leaving it on the tax forfeit statute?
We can pull it, just internally in the office, we can pull it off of there. It's not a problem. I, we haven't had any interest. If somebody would have interest, we would just disclaim that this is going on right now so that they would know.
Okay.
Like I said, there's never been any interest. But if it would come about, we would handle it and, you know, let them know that this is going to be taking place. There hasn't been any interest in that parcel. It's kind of that weird triangle piece?
Yeah.
That runs on the corner of 71 and 21. And it kind of runs down to the river there, so...
Okay, you've heard the board action, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Erickson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Knizel, discussion? Not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Posed, carried.
The next item I have then is the 2021 designation of polling places. Background, Minnesota statute 204B16 was amended in the 2017 legislation that has now required municipality, school districts, and counties to designate polling place locations by December 31st annually for the next year's election. Todd County is responsible for designating polling place locations for the entire county's absentee precinct and the one male ballot precinct, City of Swanville, and the county special election municipality locations. Our options are to adopt the attached designation listing or do not adopt the attached designation polling place resolution. Our recommendation is to adopt the attached resolution designating polling places for Todd County absentee precinct, male ballot precincts, and special election precincts within Todd County for the 2021 election year.
Okay, you've heard the request, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Becker, second by Commissioner Knizel, discussion? Newman? Sorry. All right.
Distinctive voices?
Yeah, I know you do. Discussion, I got plastic between us. I got two layers of plastic, guys, I gotta go through.
You're safe.
Yeah. I know I can't get the virus. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
The next item I have then is the Hands of Hope Resource Center lease renewal. Background, lease agreement with the Hands of Hope Resource Center for 2020 is set to expire on December 31st, 2020. The Hands of Hope Resource Center has expressed interest in renewing the lease agreement for 2021 for space utilized in the Main Street Government Center with no charge, no changes to the previous agreed terms. Our options are to renew the agreement or do not renew the agreement as presented. Our recommendation is to renew the Hands of Hope Resource Center lease agreement for January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021.
Okay, you've heard the board action, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Knizel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Erickson, discussion? Not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, carried.
The next item I have for today is the Todd County Public Defender Contract for 2021. Background, Todd County is responsible for the provision of public defender services in certain types of cases. Peters Law Office has proposed a contract renewal for 2021 and has provided the county board a summary letter for renewal. This contract has been reviewed by the county attorney. Options are to approve or do not approve, and the recommendation is to approve the contract with Peters Law Office for public defender services in Todd County for 2021.
All right, you've heard the board action, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Newman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Knizel, discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, carried.
Next board action is the transfer of funds for county ditch 18 partial repayment. On December 28th, 2017, the Todd County Board of Commissioners approved the advance of $300,000 from the general fund to the ditch fund for county ditch 18 project. On September 4th, 2018, the county board approved the 10-year repayment terms of the special assessment for this ditch project. Each year until fully repaid, the amount of principal funds collected along with the amount of interest collected is transferred from the ditch fund as a partial payment back to the general fund. Our recommendations is to approve the attached resolution authorizing the transfer of funds for a partial repayment of the ditch 18 loan. And in this year, it came in the amount of $38,440.16.
Okay, you've heard the board action, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Erickson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Knizel, discussion? Not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Posed, carried.
The last item I have today then would be the transfer of funds from the South Country Health Alliance Funds. Back, background, the Todd County became a member of South Country Health Alliance as of January 1, 2007 and further resolved to withdraw from said alliance as of December 31st, 2019. As part of the existing terms, capital payments with interest are scheduled to be returned to Todd County. The first install payment has been receded into the Human Services and Community Health Funds per audit standards. The Finance Committee recommends transferring these funds to Fund One General Fund to assist with the budgetary essentials of the county. Our options are to approve the attached resolution or do not approve, and the recommendation is to approve the attached resolution to transfer the funds of South Country Health Alliance money back to the general fund. And then it shows down there the amounts for each Fund 11, Fund 21. And just a little more background on that. In visiting with Jackie and Jenna from the HHS Division, this is recommended on their end of it also because if it stays in their accounts, it does fluctuate their programs through the state.
Okay, you've heard the board action, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Knizel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Newman, discussion? Not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, carried. Finance.
All right, so the 2021 county budget then. Background, county board has approved the preliminary levy on January 15th, or excuse me, September 15th, 2020, and has held the truth and taxation hearing on December 1st, 2020. Our recommendation is to approve the resolution adopting the 2021 budget as presented. And you'll see on the next resolution, it's balanced, we balanced the budget. I don't know, what do you want? This is just letting you know that this is the county 2021 budget, where we're at.
You can just scroll down to that and leave it there, then they can take a great, a better look at it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Kind of hard to get it all on one page here. So the revenues for 2021 will be $37,917.046 with expenditures of $36,670.46. It's just the, this is just the budget portion.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept the budget?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Becker, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Knizel, discussion? Not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carried.
The next item then would be the 2021 final levy. Background, the county board has approved the preliminary levy on September 15th, 2020 and held the truth and taxation hearing on December 1st of 2020. Our recommendations are to approve the attached resolution setting the final 2021 county levy at $18,231,820 less program aids of $1,616,571, therefore certifying the final levy for 2021, local levy at $16,616, or excuse me, $615,249.
Which would make the levy what?
2.25. I think you have that sheet in front of you.
For a sec.
2.25.
2.25.
So from the preliminary, we were at 4.4. And now that sheet in front of you is 2.25.
Okay, any discussion before we vote? Not, we have a motion to approve the final levy.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Newman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Erickson, any more discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to thank the Finance Committee for all their hard work and the department heads for working with the Finance Committee to get a respectable levy for 2021.
Okay, thank you. We haven't heard, at least I haven't, maybe you guys have, what other counties' levies are, but I think we're in a reasonable area for what we've been through, so... It's, was a task we met quite often and Denise's office, the ladies down there worked hard to present me and Barb and Chris's figures and we did a lot of discussion. At our last meeting, we come up with this issue, so, or this levy, so... Thank you to everyone. Okay, then, is there, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried, thank you. Ditch inspector Nancy, are you on?
Yep, I'm on, good morning.
Morning.
So I've got one agenda item today. It's the Riki Noonan 2021 Legal Services Agreement, County Ditch Systems. Background, the Todd County Ditch Authority has had a verbal service, verbal legal services agreement with Riki Noonan for many years. This agreement is in the form of a monthly retainer fee of $200 per month and an hourly fee for an attorney for legal services on each individual ditch system. Riki Noonan has decided they want to have a more formal agreement, so they have drafted the 2021 Legal Services Agreement. The county attorney has read over the agreement and sees no issues with it. There are two options as outlined in the service agreement. Proposal option one is a monthly retainer plus hourly services and proposal option two is hourly services only. The dollar amount for the legal services agreement retainer fee is unchanged from previous years. Option is approve one of the agreement options or do not approve one of the agreement options. The recommendation, Todd County Board of Commissioners approves the following by motion. Acting as ditch authority approves the Riki Noonan 2021 Legal Services Agreement, proposal option one, which is the monthly retainer plus hourly services as outlined in the 2021 Legal Services Agreement. Financial implications is $2,400 and it'll come out of the Commissioners Department. It is budgeted and then the hourly services amount will be billed to the individual ditch system that incurs the expense.
Okay, you've heard the board action, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Becker, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Newman, discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I only have one question. If we run into a situation in my district where we have a ditch issue and the Sock River water shed is involved, Riki Noonan represents both of them. How would we handle that? Would that be a conflict of interest?
Can kind of answer that. Mr. Chair, I, I've asked Kurt Dieter that before and they have, oh, I think there's four, four or five attorneys within their office, and so they feel it would not be because there would be different attorney representing each party.
Okay.
And there really are not many, if any, other ditch attorneys in the state.
Correct. Okay.
Mr. Chair, Nancy, if, if we would have went for option two, would the ditch people have had to pay all the hourly services or how would that work?
Option number two, if I called with any question at all, we would be charged the hourly service fee. So if I call with a general question that's not related to a ditch system, it comes out of our $200 a month retainer fee. But when I call and ask a question about a specific ditch, then Kurt will bill that to that specific ditch.
Okay.
So any question I would have then, if I called and asked a question about a process in ditch law, they would then bill by that, by that hourly fee.
Okay. Any other questions? So we're approving option one, right?
Yep, and it's basically what we have already in existence is a $200 a month plus the monthly service fee for each when it's on an individual ditch system.
Right, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, carried, thank you Nancy.
Thank you.
MIS.
Mr. Chair, I have a board action this morning on behalf of MIS and it is a board action to approve the purchase of a server. The background is, as part of the technology rotation schedule, a host server is scheduled for replacement this year. Quotes were received and funding sources have been secured for this purchase. Contributing funding sources are Compliance Fund, Recorder Technology Fund, Corrections, Social Services, and MIS Budget. Because this purchase is over $5,000, county board approval is needed. The total cost of the server is $9,105. The breakdown per fund is included. The options are to approve the purchase of a server through Now Micro in the amount of $9,105 utilizing funding sources listed or to not approve, and the recommendation is to approve the purchase of the server through Now Micro.
Okay, you've heard the request, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Erickson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Knizel, discussion? This is our normal rotation, right?
Normal rotation.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, carried.
Thank you.
Planning and zoning, Adam? Steve here?
Morning.
Morning, Adam.
Morning. Did you have those extra documents for the screen or should I pass them out?
I have them.
Oh.
Just let me know when you want to go to them.
Okay, it's this first one, actually, anyway, so, but I can read the action first.
Okay.
Okay, the first item this morning, the Ilias Estates Preliminary Platt, subdivision request to establish preliminary plat on parcel 140024700 containing two lots was approved by the Planning Commission on September 3rd, 2020.[1589.65] approved by the Planning Commission on September 3rd, 2020. It was remanded back to the Planning Commission during the September 15th Commissioners Meeting. The applicant has since obtained the appropriate variance and the item went back in front of the Planning Commission on December 3rd, 2020. The final recommendation from the Planning Commission was to grant the preliminary platte with one condition, that no further subdivision of this approved platte. So the options would be move to approve the request for preliminary plating, deny this request, or to remand back to the Planning Commission for further consideration. The recommendation at this time is approval of the Ilias Estates preliminary platte with the proposed condition.
Okay, you've heard the request, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, can we have a discussion before?
Yep.
Adam, I, I had some concerns on this because of the state statutes with the DNR on the 150-foot requirement for lake shore and then cutting it down to 85. And then our county ordinance is also that and we're supposed to be strict or as stricter than the state. I do have some concerns on this, that this is going to open us up for other issues of people coming in and wanting to start splitting.
Yes.
150-foot lots.
Yep, and that's where that variance process comes into play. We notify DNR of these requests and we do, they're given the opportunity to respond to those requests. If they choose not to, we proceed as their position would be neutral. And I just emailed Mark Anderson to confirm that again. If they had any major concerns, they would submit their correspondence and make a request for denial of the request, where on this one, we didn't have any correspondence from DNR. Secondly, that variance process requires your approving of a practical difficulty and also that variances cannot be granted on economic considerations alone. So if a new developer came in and, you know, wanted to reduce their lot width just strictly to make more money to sell more lots, that's an economic consideration and I would imagine that the Board of Adjustments would deny that sort of variance immediately. Or we probably wouldn't even let it, try not to let it get before the Board of Adjustments anyways and just take care of that in the office when the applicant came in asking questions. So on this particular case, they did apply, they proved their practical difficulty to the Board of Adjustments and obtained a variance for that reduced lot width. We received nor, no correspondence from DNR, so we proceeded with it as we normally would with any variance request and that was the last piece of the puzzle that they really needed in order to get the platte, preliminary platte to this stage right now.
So Mr. Chair, what we're seeing right now, this is a first that's been done in Todd County. We've never did this before. So, my question is, is lately, we've been having a lot of stuff coming out of the Planning Commission, sending it to the Board of Variants, so they can get a variance to override the Planning Commission or send it back to the Planning Commission, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, and I wouldn't.
So I'm a little confused on why we even have the Planning Commission if we're just going to send it to the.
I wouldn't view that as an overruling of the Planning Commission, it's two separate boards with two separate things that they review.
Correct.
It's just in order, if the Planning Commission looked at and said, this isn't meeting the requirements, they should deny it. But that's where that variance process comes in and they need to meet a whole separate set of statutory requirements in order to grant that variance and if they get it, then the Planning Commission does their job from there. On this one, and again, the one you referenced, which is on Little Birch Lake, I had conversations with Jason about those to see if we're handling these appropriately and this was the path that he suggested we go down and it was really their only option if this is what they were hoping to achieve as a landowner, was to achieve or receive a variance and if the variance was denied, it's the end of the road for them. And this is how we got to this point, I guess it was their only option was to hope for a variance and they received it and we proceeded as such from there. I don't foresee this being a major issue going forward. I think any new development is certainly going to abide by our rules that we have for lot sizes and width and whatever. This is just very unique circumstance in that it's an existing lot with only 80, it's actually 87 feet of lake frontage, which that lake frontage isn't changing. We're just basically cutting off and creating a non-repairing lot in addition to that 87 feet lake front lot.
Mr. Chair, if I could, I also got a call on this, which is to me, kind of unusual.
Mm-hmm, it is.
They were concerned about the DNR and us not getting a letter back from the DNR saying that they approved it or disapproved it. Is that a concern that we never got anything in writing one way or the other?
It's almost always the case that we receive nothing back in almost everything. Anything that happens in shoreline zoning, we send that public notification. So I recently checked in with Mark Anderson, our area hydrologist, to confirm that we're handling these appropriately. We always used to send him just a public notice and so I'm glad I had emailed him because he requested that we send the full board packet to him, so that's, has that extra information. But we were meeting our requirements prior to that and his, if they had concerns, they respond and submit their correspondence. Otherwise, if they send nothing back, it's a stance of neutrality on these cases. So it's almost always that we would just never receive anything back from them.
Nothing new for the DNR, just stay neutral.
Yes.
But Mr. Chair, what we're doing is changing the state statute. The DNR is saying, okay, let Todd County Board of Commissioners or the Board of Variants change the state statute and say, okay, we're fine with, with you taking that 150-foot lake lot and cut her down to 85 feet. That's, yeah, that should've been in writing.
Well, you can't force them to give it to you in writing because they, they have.
No, but if it comes back.
They have a policy where they do this and that's how they do it because it's a neutral position, so they don't give a definite answer, so. That's, that's the way they conduct business, which is sad, but. You used a new term I wasn't familiar with.
Okay.
Something about difficulty?
Practical difficulty?
What happened to the word hardship?
That, I don't know when hardship went away, but that, it's one and the same, I think, I don't know where, when that was updated, but that's the way I've always, since I've been here, I've understood that hardship has essentially never existed to me. But I know that's what practical difficulty used to mean by state statute, but that doesn't exist any longer.
Really?
Yep.
Mr. Chair, during your planning meeting, was there any, between the Planning Commission, any, you know, were they all in favor of it or discussions or something that we should be aware of?
Sure, on the Board of Adjustment side, this is a while back, I think they voted unanimously in favor of this. On the Planning Commission side, I think it was voted four to one.
Okay. So you've heard the request, is there a motion to approve the preliminary platte?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Erickson, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Kanizel, any more discussion? If not, maybe we should take a roll call on this.
Commissioner Erickson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kanizel?
Yes.
Commissioner Becker?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
No.
Commissioner Kircher?
Yes. Okay, next.
Okay, rezoning of parcel 060045600, an application for rezoning of parcel 060045600 received on August 27th for rezoning from AF1 to AF2 zoning. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission during the December 3rd meeting. The final recommendation from the Planning Commission was to deny the request for rezoning based on the creation of spot zoning. So the options would be to grant the rezoning, to deny the rezoning, or remand back to the Planning Commission. The recommendation at this time is to deny the rezoning of parcel 060045600 from AF1 to AF2 zoning based on the creation of spot zoning.
Okay, you've heard the request, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like discussion first.
Yes, go ahead.
I went down and spoke with Adam in regards to this one and this one is a little bit tough for me to have. It came from the Planning Commission as a three-two, so I think it's a thing that comes into a lot of opinions on how you look at things from AF1 to AF2. If you look on the Todd County map, there are many, many farms located close together in AF2 zoning, which I think Adam and I talked about, that the zoning actually probably took place after the farms were already there in some cases.
Absolutely.
But even with AF1 zoning, if everybody builds on the same corner, you can have four farms looking at each other all 200 feet apart. Where in this particular case, the request is to put it on the way far back corner of the piece being a quarter mile away from anybody else in the whole area.
Yeah, the existing house on this parcel that they'd be splitting off would be the next nearest neighbor.
That's on the front.
Yep.
And then the AF1 distancing is a quarter mile away, or AF2 distancing for zoning is a quarter mile away from the existing area.
Yep.
And did you happen to define that, I mean, sometimes.
What spot zoning refers to? Um, yeah, I just looked that up this morning. It's essentially a zoning that does a neighbor, an existing similar zoning district, and it also made reference to spot zoning being for the creation of the benefit of that particular landowner and not the property itself.
Yep.
Whatever those benefits may be.
I think it's good that we look at each one of these cases individually and I think it's important that we have the people serving on the commissions doing their job, but in this particular case, I have a struggle with it, that it's the fact that it ends up doing less harm than it would in a situation that could be done as AF1 is AF2. So my opinion on this would be that I would like to grant the request rather than deny the request in the situation where they're not, and there were no correspondence in it whatsoever.
No correspondence on this one. It's a very odd-shaped parcel, so we did work with the other landowner on this 40 and he did agree to sign on to the application so we could rezone the entire 40 rather than just a portion of the 40 acres, because we make decisions in AF1 and AF2 based on 40 acres. So we couldn't make a good reasonable decision if we weren't making a decision, having the whole 40 rezoned. So he did sign on to it and agreed to it because whether this is granted or denied, he really never has the ability to build a house on that parcel anyway. So that was the only kind of correspondence that we had and he agreed to sign on to the application, but had no feelings one way or another.
Mr. Chair, Adam, we have no maps or anything, is it, and I don't know where this is going, but would it be possible to just even put this on to next month's meeting and get some information up here for us, you know?
Sure.
Could see a map, where, where it's, you know, what, what it looks like?
Yeah, that information is easily available and I can get that to you. I don't think we're going to run into any deadline stuff because the applicant here wasn't on, really understanding the phone conversation piece for our Planning Commission hearing, so they signed an extension to their decision already anyway because they missed two meetings prior to the December one. So we can get that information and can this be the last meeting of December where this could come back to the board then?
You can put it down on the 29th, that's fine.
Okay, yeah, if that's your request.
Just give us some more information.
Sure, yeah, it is, yeah, it is a very unique shaped parcel, but yeah, we can point out where the zoning district lines are and things of that nature, if that helps your decision-making process.
So what motion do we make here?
I suppose it'd be just table till the 29th.
29th, is it? So it's just table till the 29th.
And what's our rules on tabling again?
Bring it back, you don't have to make a motion.
We don't?
No.
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
All right.
All right.
I just pull them up.
Yep, you do. Next.
Yep, okay, this one's a little longer. Request for CUP for William Hartzok, an application for a conditional use permit to operate a 60-site campground on parcel 160010300 was received on September 23rd, 2020. That item was reviewed during the November 5th Planning Commission meeting and was tabled to allow for additional information. It was reviewed again during the December 3rd Planning Commission meeting. The final recommendation from the Planning Commission was to grant the CUP with the following conditions. One, submit an approved septic design for the dump station and installation prior to the start of operation of the campground. Two, that all campground guests must empty all wastewater tanks on site prior to departure. Three, placement of natural screening barrier on the east and north sides of the property to provide a visual barrier from all public roadways. Four, no additional road accesses will be allowed along County Highway 14. Five, maintain a vegetative buffer along Little Elk River. The buffer must meet the requirements of the Minnesota Buffer Law. Six inches of vegetation height, 30-foot minimum width with a 50-foot average. Six, obtain all other federal, state, and local permits. And seven, abide by all applicable federal, state, and local standards. The options would be to grant the conditional use permit with the proposed conditions, deny the conditional use, or to remand back to the Planning Commission for further consideration. The recommendation at this time would be a motion to grant the conditional use permit for a 60-site campground on parcel 160010300 with the proposed conditions.
Adam, can I ask, did the township have any?
The township did have some concerns about the roadway, just obviously 60 sites, Friday is going to have an increase in traffic. It's a, if they come from the south, it's a longer chunk of gravel. If they come off from the north, which I think would, most people would, that's tarred county highway and then it's really short distance to get into the campsite, but the township did have concerns about the roadways, more so with ATV traffic in that area. If people are camping there, bringing ATVs in, hitting the roads to go to Camp Ripley or something like that, that was most of their concerns that they had. We had some correspondence from some neighbors with similar concerns, so that's why this was tabled and hopefully gather enough information and place appropriate conditions to help alleviate some of the concerns of the township and the neighboring property owners. We, part of their concern why it was tabled was to gather up some additional correspondence from Lauren Felbaum, so he went out and looked at it and submitted some concerns, also sent it over to Morrison County's Public Works Engineer to see if they had any concerns because it's right on the county line and we never heard anything back from Morrison County either.
Okay. All right. And is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Erickson, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Kanizel, discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, with a system this large, MPCA have been involved?
Yes.
Have they been part of the design?
Um, we don't have the design yet, that was why we did that condition there. Initially, he submitted a, a design for just holding tanks for the dump station, but it was far from adequately sized.
So we're approving something that hasn't been designed yet?
That's why we had that condition number one in there and we know what he has to do now, he's aware of it, he has a septic contractor on it. He needs to have five times the daily flow worth of holding tanks.
Cause I got a couple of these in my neighborhood.
Of campgrounds?
No, of large septic systems.
Sure.
That are shared by landowners.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I have one resort that has a very large one, so I'm just hoping and praying that this is designed big enough to handle all that because I can see, I can ask my neighbors on the flow and most of the big flows are like Memorial Weekend, 4th of July, Labor Day Weekend. So if he's not designed for that.
Yep.
Fluctuation, he ain't going to have enough room to hold.
And he, he won't have a drain field, it's all holding tanks, so he has to get it pumped if he's running out of capacity. MPCAs, you can put a drain field in, but for campgrounds like this, they actually, the suggested practice is holding tanks because of all the additional chemicals in camper's tanks, that blue treatment stuff or whatever. So that's why they require such a large system. You need, it's 40 gallons per day, per site, so 40 times 60, we, I think we calculated that he needs 12,000 gallons worth of holding tanks, where initially he had like 3,000 proposed. So it's a very large, significant system that he's going to have to install to meet the requirements of the septic rules. I've had several conversations with Mr. Hartzok about that, he's aware and I've been working with Aaron, who's our contact at, excuse me, at MPCA, to run the numbers by him, make sure that they look good and I think everybody's in agreement of what needs to be done to meet the requirement of the rule to, and then therefore meet condition number one here.
Okay. Just a thought was crossing my mind as Commissioner Newman was talking. Would it be appropriate for the County Board to pass this, these types of things, conditional bef, that all conditions are appro, or applied, complied with? And if they're not, the permit is void?
That's already in the ordinance.
Is it?
That we, that if, if the Planning Commission finds, or I guess we as staff find that they're not abiding by it, it can go to the Planning Commission for review and then ultimately come before you guys, same process, but to revoke it rather than to grant it. So that's already laid out in the ordinance.
Haven't seen any of those, I don't think.
I haven't either.
It's pretty rare because.
Here's, I haven't seen any.
I think it's pretty rare, I think a lot of times those things are handled by staff in the office of trying to point out, you know, you agreed to this condition, it was granted by the County Board, this is what you need to abide by. Some of these go the route of the, or have gone the route of the $1,000 property tax assessment enforcement route, but when it comes to condition use permitting, it, it gives us a couple, a couple avenues to enforce the things that you guys have imposed on properties.
Okay. I know you and I have talked about a assist and desist order and I don't know how many of them you've ever issued, but you.
I've never issued one myself and I don't think there's been a whole lot of them issued by the Planning and Zoning Office over the course of history period.
I don't think so either, but Commissioner Kanizel and I received a lot of calls last spring and maybe other commissioners did too about a, about a, a group of people that did not get a conditional use permit and were conducting business. And that's what I suggested to you to go up and give them a desist order.
Yep.
But I think you talked to some lawyer and you were reluctant to do that then, but I think we need to have that come into play a little more, because if we can stop the operation from conducting business until they go through the proper channels.
Yep.
That's what we should be doing. I don't know what other commissioners think about that, but we just have a lot of this, and I'm not going to say a lot maybe, but some people building buildings without permits, conducting businesses without permits, and I really believe you should have the authority to issue a desist order until the proper permits or proper guidelines are followed. I don't know what other commissioners think about that, but.
Mr. Chair, if I could, I, I kind of agree because this condition number one is huge, you know, I would like to be approving this after it was already in, other than putting it as a condition that it's already been approved and he's just going to meet the condition, so at, at that statement, I don't know if this should be coming in front of the board now or at the time when he's got all of these conditions met.
Well, we wouldn't issue any septic permitting, land use permits, or anything like that for this operation until we get the septic design approved. So we have a little bit of leverage beyond just the conditions of a conditional use permit to make sure that, that condition number one is met.
So should this be coming in front of the board now or should it be coming in the front of the board later?
Um, I guess that's your guys' decision. Personally, I feel comfortable having it approved now as, from the planning and zoning perspective, because it is, it's conditional and he can't operate until he has it in place. And that, I guess that's the way we intended to word that. So come, over the winter months here, you can get it submitted, get everything in place and be ready to install it come springtime.
I would like to see the board make a motion to approve it upon condition that number one is met before. I would like to see the board make a motion to approve it upon condition that number one is met before any other progress is, is, uh, done.
We have to do something, cause otherwise, he can go ahead and, and we have nothing to say, cause we.
So if he gets number one done, he's got most of it already.
Yep.
Done. So that would be what I would suggest the board, um, make a motion on. I mean, we're approving it, but we will only approve it if number one is met right away, so, or before anything else takes place.
For, before any progress on any other fashion on that piece of property, okay?
That the plan be filed with you.
Yeah, and I, I think, uh, I think that Bill or William would, would agree that that is also his plan at this point, so.
I think the board wants to be a little safe. At least I wanna feel a little more safe that that's done. So.
I think I had a motion, right?
Oh, did you?
Didn't I?
We did, yes.
So I can approve it and, and agree to that, so.
Sorry, I forgot about that, Rod. My apologies.
Alright.
Okay, with that.
I had a motion to approve with conditions, so if you want to define it to the number one thing is fine with me.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I think Gary made the second.
Yes. You okay with that, Gary?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Alls in favor, say aye.
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 Posed?
Aye.
You repose, Randy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next.
Okay, William Bond Trigger, request for CUP. An application for conditional use permit to establish a wholesale greenhouse on parcel zero seven zero 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 seven two zero zero was received on November fifth, two thousand and twenty. This was viewed by the Planning Commission on December third, two thousand and twenty. And the final recommendation from the Planning Commission was to grant the conditional use permit with one condition. That condition be that the site is restricted to a wholesale operation only. Conversion or addition to retail sales will require a new application and review by the Planning Commission. The option be a motion to approve the conditional use permit with the proposed conditions. Two, a motion to deny, or three, remand back to the Planning Commission. And the recommendation at this time is to grant the conditional use permit on parcel zero seven zero 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 seven two zero zero for establishment of a wholesale greenhouse with the proposed condition.
Okay, you've heard the request, is there a motion?
Adam, is it already built?
They've started it because they were, don't know if they were gonna use that structure as livestock or as a greenhouse. But if this was denied, they are gonna use it for livestock purposes. So they have a, a permit on the structures on that property already. And we had our feedlot staff look at the site, review it. It's in compliance. If they wanna use it for feedlot purposes or for egg uses, they, uh, he has all the appropriate pieces in place for that. The site's registered as a feedlot already, so.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Someone.
Motion by Commissioner Erickson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kanizel, discussion. If not, alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carried.
Alright, BOA and PC Planning Commission appointments. The attached appointment list shows the full Board of Adjustments and Planning Commission members for two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two. Reappointment is required for one Planning Commission member, Jim Pratt, and two Board of Adjustment members, Russ Vandenhuevel and Richard Johnson. Uh, in addition, there's a need for appointment of one new Planning Commission member. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Office made contact with Ken Hovit to fill this role. So the pro- proposed appointments are as follows. Uh, Planning Commission District Two, Jim Pratt. Planning Commission District number four would be Ken Hovit. Uh, Board of Adjustments District Two, Russell Vandenhuevel. And Board of Adjustments District Four would be Richard Johnson, with all those expiring in two thousand and twenty-four. The option be approve this proposed list, deny the proposed list, or three, make suggested changes for other appointments to the boards. Um, the recommendation would be approval of the recommended list of appointments for the Planning Commission and Board of Adjustments effective as of January two thousand and twenty-one.
And if I may, on District Four, Ken Hovit is a new person because someone, uh, left the Planning, uh, Commission, right?
Yep. And he would, his appointment I, I think would have been up this year anyway, but he stepped away from the board earlier this year. So we've been relying on our alternate to fill that void and it's gone well. But now that we're going into a new year, it's time to fill that. We sent out letters to, um, the townships in that area and reached out and tried to, you know, garner some interest in it. And Ken was the only name that come, that came back. I've had a couple of conversations with him and he seems like he's gonna be a good asset to the board. He's also Hartford Township Supervisor, so he's involved with that also.
Casey, do you need a motion on this?
I believe so, I'm not familiar with the appointment process, so.
Alright, is there a motion to approve?
Someone.
Motion by Commissioner Newman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker, discussion. Not, alls in favor, say aye.
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 Posed? Carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Adam, thanks.
Let me just bring this down, alright, okay. Thank you.
Jackie.
Morning.
Good morning.
Hello, hello.
Doorman now, huh?
Yeah, he sleeps once in a while.
Yeah. Golly. Alright, we have two board action forums, or I do, um, to present to you today. The first one is STEP Purchase of Service and Host County Contract Renewal. Just some background, STEP provides day training and habilitation and supportive employment services for clients with mental health and developmental disabilities. Steps, STEP receives referrals from Todd County and other counties to provide these services. We usually have STEP come in and do their annual update with contact, contract presentation. But this year, we're gonna forego that with COVID and I'm just being sure that they stay safe in their environment also. Options to approve STEP Purchase, Purchase of Service and Host County Contract Renewal, or to not approve. It's our recommendation that you approve the STEP Purchase of Service and Host County Contract Renewal.
Okay, you've heard the request, is there a motion?
Someone.
Motion by Commissioner Newman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kanizel, discussion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Jackie, did the funding go up at all, or where did the?
It's been fairly stable from year to year, but Barb, I guess I didn't, uh, look at that and I can answer that for you. I'll respond to, okay, an email and send it to you all.
Okay, any more discussion? If not, alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carried, thank you. Update?
Alright, our next, um, board action forum is one that we come into board and do each board meeting. Uh, it's just to give you that update regarding the COVID nineteen numbers. As of December fourteenth, Todd County has two thousand one hundred and fourteen lab confirmed cases and nineteen related deaths. Cases no longer in isolation is ninety-one percent, being one thousand nine hundred and sixty-one. Gender, forty-six percent, forty-six point six percent is male, and then fifty-two point four percent is female. Age range is anywhere from two months to a hundred and three years old. And case average is, uh, age is forty, forty-four point six. Total COVID test performed in Todd County as of the tenth of December, sixteen thousand one hundred and nineteen with eleven point seven positivity rate. Our case rate numbers from December second, which is just being put out for the schools, December second to the fifteenth is a hundred and eleven point two nine. Those are coming down nicely. And, um, we're seeing a downward trend in our, in our numbers as well, so. We also wanted to talk really briefly today about the vaccine plan. Thanks. So I, I did forward to you before the meeting this morning, before coming up, the COVID nineteen vaccine plan that was shared by the state, um, Community Health Service Administrator Meeting. Uh, it's called CHAC. Commissioner Malcolm did, uh, present this. And again, just to highlight some of the PowerPoint presentation is the Immunize for Impact. Uh, maximizing the immediate health benefits and reduce health, reduce death and serious injuries or illnesses. Start with those most susceptible to serious complications and those who care for them. Be sure those disproportionately impacted have access to the need of the vaccine. How it works, federal government tells the states how much vaccine they get and when they get it. Um, they sent us a, um, COVID nineteen, um, vaccine plan that was pretty canned. And we had to fill in a, a few spots, so we did that and returned it back to MDH. Um, Federal Committee of Experts has prioritized who gets the vaccine in each phase. And the State Committee of Experts provides recommendations for how to implement the federal priorities in Minnesota. Vaccine was shipped to Minnesota this past week. They have been starting to vac- vaccinate. Um, I think the MDH is, um, collecting information and will be shipping out to the healthcare facilities in the next days if they haven't done that already. Again, the two vaccines that we'll be seeing in the, in the first phase is Pfizer and Moderna, and it's been indicated with an efficacy of ninety-five percent. Both must meet strict and strictly existing safety standards. It's gonna be two dose. Adults are recommended for now. And vaccine will not be required or mandated. So the, the, um, the plan, we are gonna be starting with Phase One. There's gonna be three phases to the plan, but Phase One A, as you see here, B and C, this is what I wanted to kinda give you a visual on. Phase One A will be allocated for healthcare personnel, long-term care residents. Phase One B will be the essential workers, which is education sector, food and agricultural, utilities, police, firefighters, correction officers, and transportation. And then One C, we'd be adults with high-risk medical conditions and adults sixty-five and older. So we were, um, we, we are collecting as much information as we possibly can and reaching out to all of those individuals and healthcare facilities on Phase One A, B, and C. So Catherine, I'll let you kind of go from there.
Yeah, and, um, local public health, our role is to kinda fill the gaps, right? So right now, they'll be shipping out to healthcare, um, sectors. So our healthcare system should be receiving vaccine next week. Uh, primarily, they'll be receiving the Pfizer vaccine. That's the one that's a little more challenging as far as stability. It comes ultra-cold and has to be used within five days after it leaves that ultra-cold. Um, so it's kinda good that healthcare gets that. They have a lot of staff, of course, to vaccinate. They also will be vaccinating long-term, um, staff and residents that they're associated with. So Central Care, of course, will be vaccinating their own facilities. Lakewood may be utilizing the PPP, the, um, Pharmacy Partnership Program. So if you've heard, been familiar with that, Walgreens and CVS, um, have, um, basically indicated that they would be able to receive vaccine and then vaccinate long-term care staff and residents, right? When it isn't feasible for healthcare to do that. So, um, I know, like the Todd County Care Center, they've signed on with Walgreens to come out and vaccinate their staff and residents. Where we're really gonna be filling in the gaps is assisted living facilities, right? Um, Central Care and Lakewood may be able to handle those on their, um, that are associated with them. But we've got a couple smaller assisted livings in the county. Um, and then also group homes. They follow very closely in that One A. One A is split actually into One A, first priority, second priority, third priority. As we all know, the availability of the vaccine is the most challenging thing here. We're not gonna get a ton, we're gonna get allotments of it. And so we need to make sure that we have really good numbers, like Jackie has said, of, um, how many staff and residents at some of those congregate care settings, um, are willing to take the vaccine and interested in it. So we're gathering that as we speak. Um, and then we'll be able to look at then moving to some of those essential work group, or essential workers. And then, of course, um, adults with high-risk conditions and adults sixty-five plus. Um, at the Expo Building, our plan is, now that it's ready to go, right? Okay, perfect. Um, is to basically set that up so it's ready to go as soon. Most likely what we'll do is stations at the Expo Building, right? We'll call it a closed pod, point of dispensing initially, because again, we're gonna have to focus on those priority groups. So if we're gonna, let's say, vaccinate EMS, fire, you know, rescue, all those types of people, utility workers. We'll be setting it up so where it's only available for those to schedule appointments and come in and get vaccinated. Once we get to the grander population, if people aren't able to get vaccinated at their healthcare provider, we'll be looking at then, if we have vaccine, um, how do we open up and do open pods? Where people, anyone could come in and get vaccinated, right? So that will come, it's not gonna be right away. But we are really optimistic now that we'll be seeing vaccine very soon. Um, we have a new vaccine fridge and freezer along with our existing one that will allow us to store vaccine longer. The Moderna vaccine is probably what we'll get because it does have the ability, once it leaves ultra-cold, to be at a regular freezer temp for six months. And then to be in the fridge for up to a month. So that gives us a lot more opportunity to plan. Um, and also, we don't wanna receive a thousand doses at a time. We want smaller shipments as, and, cause as you all know, we have to give that initial allotment. And then Moderna is four weeks later, Pfizer's three weeks later. So then you have to plan, of course, for the second dose. And so it'll take some logistical work, um, here, but we're pretty optimistic that in January, we'll be, you know, able to vaccinate some of those priority populations. I think long-term care will be vaccinated here, or probably the next two weeks, so that's exciting news.
Can I ask a question? Do you know how many vaccines you're getting at this point or not? How many shots you're actually going to?
Many doses?
Doses.
Yep, it's a two-dose, yep, so you.
No, but how many are you?
Volume.
Oh!
Gosh, no. I, what I assume is gonna happen, and this is, again, things change every day, as Jackie knows as well, is that we will request a certain amount. So they want us to give them very accurate numbers. Right now, we're looking at those assisted living facilities that aren't going to be covered by the PPP or a healthcare facility. We're looking at those group homes, we're looking at some of our EMS that are also not covered by healthcare. Um, and we will probably request, let's say, two hundred doses, something like that. The difficult thing is, um, one, once you draw those up, right, you have to use them. And also, we know there'll be some vaccine hesitancy, so maybe not everyone will get vaccinated. We also know that some people have already had COVID, right? And so we're learning more and more about, you know, is that gonna still be offered to them or not? So it, I'm assuming, Barb, what we'll do is we will request a certain amount and they will ship it to us. They do not wanna ship us more than we can receive, right? And what we've heard, Moderna will come in a hundred-dose shipments. So I would assume we'd be making a request based on our numbers and based on what we truly think is possible for us to give out. We also will be signing some redistribution agreements with Morrison, Wadena, Lakewood, Central Care. Basically, what that will allow us to do, let's say Lakewood has five doses and they need to get rid of it. And we know that we have a group home that could take that. We could then take the vaccine from Lakewood and give that as well. So I think it'll be a very collaborative effort between our facilities as well.
So each, like Lakewood and Central Care, they'll, they will be requesting their own doses?
Correct.
Also?
Correct. Yep, they'll be going through the Healthcare Coalition, it's called, the Central Region Healthcare Coalition. We will be requesting directly from the Department of Health.
So we're really working on now trying to reach out to, to those, um, group homes and assisted living regarding numbers. Cause it, we are gonna ask that it be up to them to, to know what their numbers look like. And then ask for, if they have any guardians, um, any of their residents or clients, to be assured that they have their proper permission to give the vaccine to the, to their clients or residents. So we have as much accurate information as we can get when we do submit.
Are you transporting the vaccine to them, or are they coming to you?
That's something we're gonna work out with them as well.
Cause I was wondering how you, like, we've got a lot of low-income apartment buildings, people don't have cars. So how do they get to the vaccination site, or do you go to them, or whatever?
And I think we're open to either.
Okay.
Right, we'll be asking what their needs are, and you're absolutely right. I mean, transporting the vaccine, again, we've done it with flu and we do that, you know, with our current flu clinics, we'll go onsite. So absolutely, I think that is an option. But I think we also want to use our Expo Building and as, you know, people have abilities to come there, it would be nice. Um, cause you could just vaccinate a lot more people in a short amount of time. But I think initially these, um, some of these priority groups, group homes, assisted livings, it might be a lot of onsite, just because transportation and winter is gonna be a challenge, so.
And the onesies, twosies, assisted living, because we do have small assisted living homes or, um, foster, you know, homes, um, that have very small numbers. So it might be easier for them to come to us versus us going to them, but.
Anything else, commissioners? Thank you.
And let me add that this could change tomorrow because it's changing every day. This is our report as of today. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, before we go into, um, closed session, is there any reports? None, okay. Um, then I guess we're prepared to go into closed session. Todd County Board of Commissioners will hold a closed session pursuant to Minnesota statutes thirteen D point zero three. 13D .03 to consider strategies for labor negotiations. Is there a motion to close the meeting?
Motion by Commissioner Knizels, or Second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Eriksen. All those in favor say aye.
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 Coles carried. We have a Coles meeting at ten ten a.m. on December fifteenth, twenty twenty. So couple break here for you to get things off the air and we're gonna have Susan on? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, and we have a work session coming up, so, yep.
Forgot my mask.
That don't affect you, man.
(laughing) Oh shit, forgot my mask.
If they would be unavailable for some reason, vacations, illnesses, or whatever, they would have a physician from one of the other, whether St. Cloud or Painesville or whatever, from Central Care come up and fill in those duties, so that'd be covered. So, there is an increase that we have budgeted for, and it's just been long coming that we, that the contract has been pretty low for quite a while, and I think it's just, dollar figures are starting to match what the services we're getting now, we're gonna be getting. There's also an increase in services. Should reduce our taking inmates to, to the facility up here, which of course will save us money in deputy wages and all that good stuff. It's typically when we bring an inmate up, it's anywhere from an hour to sometimes three hours. There have been times it's been longer where you sit up at the hospital with these inmates, where now we can have a physician come right into the facility. They're gonna have a, I can't remember the term they use, but basically a card where if it's on a weekend, we can call them if the inmate's brought in over the weekend. Jail staff can talk to them, they can recommend to the nurse that, yep, we administer X, Y, Z medication to them, and they'll have it right there for us to administer that. That's more or less on lines of like withdrawals from drugs and or alcohol.
And then the mental health part will cut down on hopefully our suicide watches that we provide, because they'll be able to meet with them and decide if they need to really be on suicide watch or if we're wasting our time with that portion of it.
Another big benefit of this too is they'll do a med screening when these inmates come in. Dave's been there, and it's only gotten worse since he's been there, we're getting some of these inmates in with 15 plus medications sometimes. And they'll actually look over these medications and they'll say, you know what, they don't need this one, this one, and this one, but these other ones, yeah, they do need, so they'll be watching that as well as, as they can administer new meds if they need to, and it's just gonna streamline. They'll be putting in Epic, which is their record system. That will give them, if we need any type of records for any incident, that'll be right there, boom, they can send out any treatment, what they did, when they did, it's all date and timestamp, what happened with the notes of the physician and or nurse.
Are they allowed to share this information with our social worker down there, as far as HIPAA?
I would assume so if it has to do with care for that individual.
Okay.
And that was another question I brought up to them. They said they would be very happy to work with our social worker in getting, their aspect of it's gonna of course be aftercare for medical, where Jen also does, you know, do they need a ride to get to court dates? Do they need housing? So that'll make Jen's job a little easier on the medical side, where they can get together and put an after jail plan together for their medical needs, so hopefully we won't be revisited by these people time and time and time again.
I think at the long range, it probably will save us some money if we-
Correct.
Time and money, because time is our main thing, we don't have time to take up three hours or four hours of our deputies' time, they could be out doing productive work.
That's the problem we have, sometimes we assign a deputy to it, it gets busy, and all of a sudden they're up in Hewitt on a hot call, and we're like, we're scrambling to either reschedule and or, if me and Lonnie are available, sometimes we've taken them up there, and so it's, it's gonna be much more efficient, streamlined.
Maybe a little more control over narcotics too.
Correct.
Yep.
Yep. Any questions?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, is this gonna be brought to us on the 29th?
29th and or whatever, the first one in January, whatever works for you guys. Whatever works best for you guys.
Okay, just make sure you change the Todd County Board Chair from Gary Canizal to whoever's the chair is.
Okay.
If it's January, it'd be-
Gary's been telling me what to do for the last year anyway. (laughing)
Yeah, we can certainly do that.
Okay.
I'm gonna put a note on there.
Well, Barb will be the next chair, so, unless we do it on the 29th, but it doesn't really matter. I wouldn't even put a name in there, probably just board chair.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd probably be the easiest.
Because that's gonna rotate.
We did implement this within our budget going into this, so-
Yes, and we worked with Steve and Lonnie on the finance committee for the increase of this contract. They were able to shave other areas, so it just aligned. And it is budgeted for 2021 then.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, any questions, board members? Bring it back.
Thank you guys, appreciate it.
Where's our violation updates, are we not doing that one? Is Adam?
Adam's next.
He's not gonna use this one, that'd be set up somewhere else.
He just walked through though.
Pardon?
We sure can, that's not a problem with me.
I don't know, where'd he go?
I think he went to the bathroom.
Oh yeah, let's go to number four.
Let's go to mine, the, yes. So, this is just to have you review it, so you know when we do bring it in January to pass it, so you're aware of the dates. If you have any conflicting, to let us know. The commissioner dates are set, like our normal protocol, the first and third Tuesday, and then we pick the last one, the 28th, and put that in right away too, so we would know. There's no conflict with any of your AMC, and there's no conflict with any elections. So, that's just for you to review and let me know, so that when I bring it in January, if you have any issues that we would have them discussed prior to.
Yep, go ahead, go to the next one.
Okay, and then the 2021, we did set this up on the presumption that Becker and Erickson would be chair and vice chair, and then the committees fall in the alignment of that rotation. This also will be brought up the first meeting in January, so if there's any that you're getting off of or we need to change, please let myself or my staff know so that we can have that prepared for the January one. So, this was just for a review for you, if there's, if there's something we missed, let us know, but we did make the changes just for chair and vice chair. And then my last one, I think is my last one, is just I'll also be bringing the board protocol for 2021, and that's just standard that we have in place now, talking about how the board conducts their business. And just letting you have these to review before the January one, if there's any changes or additions or deletions that I need to do, please let me know.
Okay.
And we're going back to his now.
Okay, then Adam, you're up.
I emailed you this also, but I'll give copies here.
Thank you.
I figured you wanted a few minutes either way.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, just a brief update before the final board meeting of the year on where we're at with, sorry, an update of where we're at with the violations around the county that were potentially going to be assessed for 2020. Some, again going back to last year's first, we had two that were fully resolved, the four that remain are under item number one there. Linda Jean Hansen, the tank in that, it was a, an old septic tank that was failing, dangerous, kind of falling in, it was a big hole in the ground. They did fill that with some sort of material and crushed it, but it was never inspected by a licensed contractor, and the appropriate paperwork was never submitted to the county. So, we're hoping to hear back from them yet, I did have a conversation with the Hansons about that, and they weren't real happy, but that's by rule that that needs to be signed off on by a contractor. So, homeowners can do their own septic work, it just needs to be signed off on at a minimum. So, they really just need to work, we sent them the contractor's list to just get ahold of somebody and at least get a signature, and hopefully that will be resolved, because it sounds like it's most of the way there, other than having it appropriately signed off on and the paperwork submitted to the county. I'll just keep going unless you have questions, please just interrupt me. James Stemming is one from last year, no progress on that one, no contact, no information to provide, so I think that one is up for potential assessment again. Stephen and Daniel Owen, there was another property owner involved with this one, Gloria Freeze, who I have finally had really extensive conversations with, and since I've started having conversations with her, there's been significant progress on that property. And since I've started having conversations with her, there's been significant progress on that property. They've got a metal scrapper out there, some dumpsters. They're hauling stuff out of the center of the property to get everything cleaned up. They had crushed a couple old mobile homes and we're working on hauling those off. So there has been some significant progress on that one. And they're still working on it. I told Gloria that we'd make another site visit prior to, uh, the twenty-ninth to document progress again. I feel like that one can probably be taken off of potential assessment because they've done an excellent job of getting that cleaned up. Um, Tim Forsier, um, very limited progress, if any at all. It seems like sometimes stuff is moved around, um, but not much has ever moved off. Um, again, the only correspondence I had was an email back in June and since then, there's been no contact or progress or anything with our office on that one. Then moving into this year's, um, Jack McCoy, we have had a little bit of contact with Jack. Um, we went and did a site visit at the end of September. There definitely has been some improvements out there. I was hoping to have further conversations with Jack about what the next steps are, how are we gonna get this finished up? What its intentions are, and I've called him, left him a voicemail, um, and now I can't seem to get in touch with him again. So, um, my intention with that one is to continue to try, give him another phone call or two, hope that he calls back. And we can give you a better update and have an idea of what he's gonna do to finish up his violation process, but he has certainly made a little bit of improvement out there. That one, um, is just in a residential area. The township has concerns with it. It's on the corner. Everybody sees that, so. Um, so the next one, August Langseth, um, no contact with our office, no improvements, not much to report there. Um, next one, Georgia Ann and David Larson. Had a couple conversations with David. Uh, we were gonna try to schedule a site visit to review the site and just come up with a good plan of how he's gonna clean it up, what needs to be removed to resolve the violation. Um, he agreed to that. I tried to call him yesterday to get that site visit scheduled and he said he was in the hospital and just had a stroke. Um, so it's tough to make a site visit then and tough to determine how to make this move forward, um, when there's medical issues going on. But as for the violation itself, um, Rod, you probably know more than I, but it's a longstanding messy property. Um, and no recent progress has been made at all, as far as I know. Lots of old lawn mowers and things of that nature. Um, Jeff and Christine Coolman, um, there's been no contact with our office other than a letter asking for more time. They did install a fence to provide some screening, um, but it only screens the highway seventy-one, I believe. If you drive down the other road, which would be on the north side of the property, you can see right in there. We sent follow-up letters to him, hoping that we could just talk more about what the next steps are, what needs to be removed. They have an extra house out there. And we have not heard anything from the Coolmans at this point, um, but there's been a little bit of progress. Again, that's a longstanding one that I'm sure everybody is aware of. Um, William and Marsha Owen, received a call from Marsha in late September claiming that there was a cleanup effort. And we did a site visit shortly after that and found that there was nothing done. Um, it was kind of discouraging. We looked at some of the photos yesterday, again, just to review, and there's piles of garbage out and around everywhere yet. So they have had contact with us, but, uh, I don't know if they're intending to mislead us, but no progress has really been made. Uh, Harold Harkum, no contact with our office and no improvements. Um, I think that one at this point is up for assessment as planned. Next one, Mary Ann Girving, this is the one that I had David in here with to talk about, um, the Health and Human Services has concerns with public health issues. Um, have had a couple different conversations with people interested in buying it. Um, for a couple different reasons, someone wanted to buy it just to clean it up, sick looking at it. Another one wanted to buy it and clean it up and build a storage, uh, garage there for himself. Um, but nothing's happened with that at this point in time. I think it's certainly one that needs to be assessed. Conversations with the landowners have been cut off and it's just continuously getting worse. Again, that one is right in a residential area. Uh, Wayne and Belinda Prather, had many conversations with, uh, Belinda. Uh, Lauren's been out there a couple times to review it. They made some cleanups. They got rid of an old trailer that they just need to haul off as time allows now. They have some plans for some older structures to put, uh, some animals in, but they have certainly made some cleanup efforts and we've documented this. And I think that they're at a point where the assessment can go away and we'll just continue to work with them. And then the last one, Gerald and Patricia Nelson, I've had lots of conversations with them. They've submitted the, an application for our county septic loan program and they submitted a septic design to, um, replace that failing system. So really the final step would just be the installation of the system, which obviously can't happen today or anytime soon, so hopefully that'll happen in the spring. I think that they're at a point where the assessment can be removed because they have every piece of the puzzle in place except actually installation of the system. I think there's a few things that we gotta work on over the next couple of weeks, but most of these, I kinda are at a point where we know yes or no if the assessment should remain in place. But that's the brief update unless you guys have questions.
I don't really have a question, Mr. Chairs, to comment, but I think so many of these situations have been in place for years and years and years and developed over years and years and gradually got worse. My conversation with, um, Adam was, you're not gonna solve them overnight, I mean, some of them, and, and to just keep progressing is progress, you know? I think we're doing a good job of at least making progress on them and, uh, trying to stay in contact with them and keep the pressure on, so. I appreciate that because everybody wants them cleaned up.
Yep.
Like I said, it, it's a tough job, but I do think we're making good progress.
I would absolutely agree. I think this, this assessment process has allowed us to make some really good progress on properties that need to be cleaned up. And there's still a penalty there for those that just simply choose to ignore us. But I really do appreciate the opportunity to work with landowners and make progress on them, and I think that this has really been good for that purpose. So, any other questions?
I had a call from a guy from Sylvan Shores.
Okay.
And he wants me to try to get you guys to do something out there. I don't know what, I know Barb's been working on that, but.
Is it one that we have on our?
Sure.
Okay.
He's the head of the Lake Association or the Association or whatever.
But the particular property that they have in question is one that we've looked at before?
I don't know. He said there was, supposedly he went out there and seen there was, but the guy has moved in more trailer houses since you guys were out there.
Okay. I'm not aware of what that is, but there's a lot of stuff that goes on in Sylvan Shores for sure. Yep.
I think Tim had been involved in it before.
Okay. Yeah, if you point out which one it is, we'll look at what we have for notes and, um, follow up from there. I did, uh, hear recently that Sylvan Shores is also taking some things into their own hands under, they have their own set of rules.
That's what he was saying out there, trying to clean up some stuff on their own.
Sure. Yep. But if you, I'm not sure which one you're talking about. If you just let me know, I can take a look at it. Any other questions?
Thanks, Adam.
Alrighty, thank you.
Morning, Chris.
Good morning, Board. Um, just, I'm gonna set up here. So I was asked to come in today to discuss market value, which seems pretty generic and pretty simple until we really start getting deep, so. I've got a slideshow set up. I forwarded it in its draft form to the commissioners and Chris Bowser. And it's changed a little bit since then, but basically we're gonna go through the definition, uh, why it matters, how we achieve it, some questions that concern it from taxpayers and where we're looking in the future. So to jump right in, uh, market value is defined as the most probable price expressed in money that a property would bring if exposed to an open market by a willing buyer and a willing seller. All of those things matter. Um, and that's because one of the examples we like to use is a father-to-son sale. Now, that's not gonna be arms-length, it's not gonna be open market, so that's not what we would consider market value. Even if they sell it at a price that I would say is market value, we're still not gonna use that type of situation because it doesn't meet our definition of the example here. Why does it matter? Why do we care about market value? We care about market value because Article Ten of Minnesota Constitution states that our property tax system is based on value. You will be taxed according to your value. And because taxes occur every year, so does value. We reassess value property every year because the tax is new every year as well. Department of Revenue has given us the guideline of ninety to one oh five. I know I've spoke about those numbers before, but basically what it means is if we think that a property is worth a hundred thousand dollars, we are well within our right to be at ninety thousand or a hundred and five. As we look at sales and costs and income data, we adjust our numbers to make sure that we're within that assumed estimated market value. Anything above one oh five is not acceptable and anything below ninety is also not acceptable. These are the property tax components. Um, market value is highlighted there in yellow. As you can see, it's only one step of a multi-step process. There's three different levies, at least, you know, there's watersheds and other stuff as well, but these are your three main ones. Uh, market value and classification both work together to form your tax capacity. If any one of those first-line items move, the property tax will change.
Chris?
Yes.
Does the, uh, watershed levy come in there or no?
It would, yeah. Um, watershed levy. So I outlined here the three basic portions. You get towards like, there's different areas, like I know around the city's metro area, they have a mosquito control area and they're, they have a taxing capacity as well. So any government agency that can levy a tax would be included in the red zone. Um, the blue happens in the assessor's office. We establish the market value and we establish the classification. Um, you as a board and township boards and school boards and city councils establish the red zone. So if we just look at market value, what's in that box? What changes market value? This list isn't meant to be exclusive or all-inclusive. This is just a example of the things that we're looking at when we determine market value. If any one of these items changes, your market value very could well changes. How do we figure out what it is? Uh, there's three methods. There's the cost approach, the income approach, and the sales comparison approach. And these all have benefits and they all have cons as well. Uh, first one is the cost approach. When do you use it? Uh, the best time is new construction, special, special purpose, public buildings or unique designs. These are things that don't have a lot of other outside aspects like depreciation or comparable sales. You're not gonna get a lot of comparable sales on this particular building. There's not a lot of historic courthouses for me to look at. So in a situation like that, we would use a cost approach to determine how much it's worth. How do we do it? Uh, first step is always land. Um, so we figure out what the land is worth and then we'll look at the building and determine how much it would cost to build that, including materials, labor, and entrepreneurial effort. Those last two, labor and effort, are important. A lot of people, especially in our rural communities, will build their own pole shed or fix their own deck or things like that. And when we assess that additional value, they'll say, it didn't cost me that to build. Well, no, it didn't, but if I'm gonna buy that pole shed from you, I expect that I'm gonna have to pay for your labor and some sort of effort on your part as well. Um, you're taking a risk, you're buying the material, you're using your tools, you should be rewarded for those efforts. We also deduct depreciation from the final building cost to determine a current cost for the structure. Income. Rentals, apartments and office spaces. These are things that if you're gonna buy these things, you're gonna do it because you're gonna make money off of these things. Um, you're not doing it to live in. Oftentimes, and when we value using the income approach, we don't necessarily care about the shape of the building or the age of the building. Um, it's all about the math. So the math is gonna be your rent minus your vacancy, minus your costs. And you're gonna eventually end up with what we call a gross rent multiplier. Um, we can look at current apartment sales and determine how much they make or how much they sell for per unit or per square foot or per bedroom. And based on those sales of those apartments, we're gonna figure out what your apartment's worth. Very mathematically inclined. Limited use on this one. This one's our bread and butter. This is sales comparison approach. Best view used for bare land, single-family homes and condos. Not a lot of condos in Todd County, but the other two are prevalent and that's why we use this the most. How do we do it? First thing, determine what physical attributes exist on the subject property. So we'll go out to a parcel and look and see what exists there. A single-family home with a basement, detached garage, we list all those things. And we'll come back to the office and we'll view properties that have the same or very similar characteristics. So we know if parcels like yours sell for a hundred thousand, then yours is also worth a hundred thousand. We also have to make adjustments. If the subject parcel has no deck, but the other ones, the sale prop, properties do, we'll have to adjust for that deck value. Um, we use all that data and we'll make a final estimate of our value based upon it.
What's the same neighborhood?
Same neighborhood is, was that on the slide or was that on the other one?
One.
Oh, so that's gonna depend on the market. Um, in most cases in Todd County, it's gonna be your township. Staples City, for example, has three distinct neighborhoods. They have the Wadena side. They have from the Todd County line to the railroad tracks and then from the railroad tracks south. So we'll look at those neighborhoods separately and see what each area is doing. Um, a lot of townships, especially in the southern part of the county, will look at on-water versus off-water. We can go so far as to say, this is, these sales are sandy beach sales. So it depends on, the more we can narrow it down and still have good data, the better off we are. We don't wanna narrow it down to the point where we're saying only things that occurred on Finch Road. Just as an example.
Yeah, if I could, Chris, when you say, you know, like the city of Staples, you have three distinct living areas. My question is, when you break it down so small, is that part of the problem with this spiking and dropping?
And.
You know, if you compare it to a bigger area, would that be more of this level or slightly increased?
Yep.
But when we narrow it so closely down, we see this.
And that's where I was kinda leading with that Finch Road example. If we only look at Finch Road, for example, or Sylvan Shores, we're gonna see very few sales, so if we, we'll say ten sales. One sale can change the market when you're only looking at ten.
Yeah.
Um, last year, I believe, we had two hundred and sixty, give or take, residential sales in Todd County. If you take all two sixty, you have a very large sample, so you have a generic trend, if you will. Um, Long Prairie trends are not the same as Staples trends and those are not the same as Bertram trends. So we have to narrow it down to the point where we still have good data. We don't wanna go all the way down to Finch Road, but we can't just look at Todd County as a generic neighborhood by itself. Um, in Staples, we generally have somewhere around twenty sales on the north side and the south side, and I can't speak for the Wadena side. So twenty's actually a pretty good number of sales. In a city like Eagle Bend, for example, we'll get eight to ten. So in that situation, that's your whole market is Eagle Bend.
Chris, if I can interject one more time, you take the city of like Barville and it's gone to single, where it used to be a couple that lived in a house versus now a lot of the houses, you have multi-families living in those houses. Therefore, they're willing to spend more money on a property. Does that come into account at all?
It doesn't until there's after four livable units. Um, Minnesota statute has single-family up to four-unit homes, so it's one to four-unit homes as a group. Ag is a group, bare land's a group, commercial's a group. Um, there's a lot of these different groups, but, uh, you look at a duplex or a tri or something like that, they're lumped in with single-family homes. Now that's where we look at number three on that list in front of you, we make adjustments for differences. Um, so we're gonna look at things like size of the house, um, finished basement area, um, additions that add to that value. Fully knowing and understanding that a thousand-square-foot house is gonna sell at a different price point than a two thousand dollar or a two thousand square foot house with a finished basement. There's a lot more potential for that larger house with the finished basement, especially in an area that has. multiple families living in a singular home. Or generations of families living in a home. Some of these next few slides are FAQs. These are ones that we hear often. If my neighbor builds a house, will my taxes go up? No, if anything, they're going to go down. If we take as an example, one acre of bear farm ground, you're going to pay about ten dollars in tax per year. You take that same acre and build a house on it, that's now going to save four or five thousand dollars of tax. It's going to be generated off of that one acre. If the board, the school district, or whoever doesn't raise the levy by five grand, that new person's five thousand dollar tax bill is going to get distributed. So everybody's is going to go down just a little bit, but they're helping the greater cause. A few years ago at the TNT, I showed an example with some cartoon houses and I just, it was called Hatch County was the example, but it showed that how if one person's changes something, even if you change nothing, your taxes can still change. Because of what they have done or what they have not done. We have a lot of veterans in Todd County that have applied for and been granted veteran exclusion. These people don't have to pay taxes on a good portion of their home. Those taxes are redistributed to those people that are paying taxes on their home. For better or worse, I'm not judging the program, but that's a simple fact. If they're not paying taxes and you're still collecting the money as commissioners, as a county, someone's paying them. And in this example here, the owner of the new house is picking up as more money than that bear acre was. My house is not complete. Cannot be valued. Anytime something adds or takes away value from a property, we will assess it as such. If you add a half a house, it's going to add value. Even if you're not done with it, if someone goes to buy your property today, they don't have to spend the money on that half a house, so they're going to pay you for that half that's there. You can also kind of paraphrase this to say, all I did was re-roof and re-side. I didn't add value. You can't increase my value because I added siding. If you have two identical houses and one has a thirty-year-old leaky roof and siding with holes in it, and the neighbor's house was just remodeled on the outside, who's going to get more money for their house? Assuming everything else is equal, that new siding and those new shingles and those new windows are going to add to the sale price. House value went up, homestead exclusion went down. I have an explanation written there, but I'd rather just show it. This is the equation as given and provided by statute. Homestead exclusion is at its greatest when your house value is seventy-six thousand dollars. Anything above or below that, you're going to have a reduction in your homestead exclusion. So you're going to pay more in tax. If you have a four hundred and fourteen thousand dollar house, you might as well not have a homestead. It doesn't matter anymore. This is only for residential and the house, garage, and first acre of ag. The rest of the ag, land, and outbuildings play a whole different game. So this was just that. Houses, garages, and all residential property. Next slide. Value history. This shows a seven-year value history of Todd County. I broke it out into seasonal, residential, agricultural, and on the top blue line is total county. You can see from the course of twenty fourteen up until current, we have gained five hundred million dollars in value. We often talk about the roller coaster. So I graphed this to see what our roller coaster looked like and I was a little shocked and a little disappointed. There's not much going on. So I dug a little deeper. Here's our average changes over the past seven years. Every year on average, egg goes up just about two percent. Seasonal rec goes up about two percent, but residential sticks out like a sore thumb. It goes up fourteen percent a year. That doesn't make sense. Why? Well, the why is because the data represented here shows all of our residential market from fourteen to current, not each individual parcel. So what's different from fourteen to now? We've gained three hundred and fifty-five new houses in Todd County. Of those three hundred and fifty-five new houses, three hundred and seventy-five are residential. We have taken one hundred egg parcels and moved them into the residential classification. So residential looks a lot bigger because there's a lot more things in it. We started with seventy-two hundred parcels and now we have seventy-six hundred parcels in it. So it's not that each house went up fourteen percent, it's that the sum of the pie got up bigger. There are questions on that particular portion? It's a lot of data and kind of an abstract concept, but it's just simply more in that bucket than there was. And the things in that bucket have also grown in value as well. Everything else shows where we've been. This shows where I think we're heading. In twenty twenty, we had forty-seven bear land sales. When we started the year, we knew that we were about five percent below the average sale in Todd County. Now, we're fifteen percent below the average bear land sale in Todd County. So those forty-seven sales are showing us that the market has changed ten percent in the past three hundred and sixty-five days. These numbers are subject to change. They're not finalized, but this is pretty close to where I think we're going to end up. Total egg market, seventy-two sales, we're about six percent low. And you guys can read the rest on your own. Commercial was kind of a shock. Covid twenty twenty, all of that stuff. Market's about the same. Granted, there's only eight sales, but we're not seeing that big drop that you would expect. If they're selling, they're about the same.
Like the bear land sales, it's probably because of the markets were down. Green prices.
Yep.
Now they're going up.
Yep.
Next year they'll probably.
Yeah, and that certainly, you know, when we look at those graphs, we don't really know what that next year is going to bring until we look at this. You know, if you look at this first column here, that says twenty twenty final, these are numbers I'd be proud of anywhere. Ninety-four to ninety-five and a half percent for every single classification, that's as equal as you could ask for. Whether you're residential or egg, bear land, or commercial, we're within about five percent of the market on those individual classifications. And now everyone, with possibly the exception of commercial, is showing that we've had a market improvement in twenty twenty. That's all I had. I'll stand for questions if there are any.
So Mr. Chair, I got a couple of questions. On commercial, what percentage of commercial pays taxes in Todd County overall? What is the, the, the number that commercial produces for tax revenue in Todd County?
I can look that data up. Denise, you do the taxes. You have that number available?
I don't, not with me.
Because I have a lot of constituents that are coming back at me going, what the hell are you guys doing? You know, I can't afford to live in, in Todd County anymore because you're taxing me out of the county. Okay? So I come back and say, wait, you know, the finance committee has worked their butt off. They've set levy at two point five percent, which I can say today. And they said, well, then why did my valuation go up thirty-five percent? What are you guys doing? And I said, well, somebody in your neighborhood must have sold something. Well, why would they pop me thirty-five percent? I said, I can't answer that. Okay? You know, it's based on whatever was sold, but it comes back to the commissioners of going, what the hell are you guys doing? You need to get rid of some people at the county because I can't afford my taxes. You need to control your budget. So when, when they get that tax statement or even get that evaluation right before the truth and taxation, which is a bunch of crap because that should have been separated years ago. Okay? Truth and taxation have been separate before the valuations come out. Or the valuation should come out four months ahead of time before we do the truth and taxation.
Correct. Okay? Mr. Chair, if I may, the valuation statements come out in March. So we do try to keep that separation from step one in March to step two in November. And then the tax statement itself comes out in April. So that's step three. There's a little overlap there. Agreed. We're playing by the rules as best we can. As far as your thirty-five percent increase, is that tax related or value related?
Value, value. And she said, well, my taxes didn't really go up a lot, but she said I was just caught off guard with the thirty-five percent value increase. And I said, well, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I don't know the specifics of, I don't know the scenario right now. Be happy to look into it. If you have a parcel number or name, I can certainly do a follow-up, but
And I did pull my twenty-year history up on my property.
I received that.
Yep. And, and, and that's why I call it the roller coaster effect. At one time, okay, and, and I started out with a bear lot, twenty-seven by forty-eight shed, twenty-eight by sixty-eight house, two decks on that house. I didn't tar my driveway till about, I don't know, three years ago, four years ago. But in two thousand and two, that was valued at ninety-one thousand. Okay? Okay, I built it in two thousand. Okay, my first tax statement was, or estimated market value was three thousand. But between two thousand and two and two thousand and eight, it jumped from ninety-one thousand to a hundred and ninety-three thousand, two hundred. And, and if I borrowed sixty thousand from the bank, the bank, you know, and I'm going, wow, you know, I got some, some damn nice credit here. But from two thousand and eight to two thousand and seventeen, it went from a hundred and ninety-three thousand down to ninety-eight thousand. So it just took another nosedive. And then from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty, it went from ninety-eight thousand to a hundred and fifty-two five. So it's that roller coaster effect on the estimated market value that people are looking at going, what are you guys doing?
Mr. Chair, if it's okay, can I put a graph up of what you're talking about? I won't if you don't want me to, but there is a very specific key in that, and that's two thousand and eight. Two thousand and eight was a big deal in our world. Two thousand and eight, we had what we call the Great Recession. And values did go down. This, Mr. Newman, is, the blue line shows the parcel graph. I didn't do twenty years. I went to two thousand and seven on here. To show that first part of when it went down to two thousand and eight. And you can see how it trended down that way. The blue line is your total parcel. The green's the house. The red is the lots. The purple is the garage. The blue is, the light blue is the deck. Deck's plural, excuse me. Need a little bit more screen here. So you can see that in two thousand and eight, nine, we did go down. And it was reflective of sales. Those sales and honestly, double-wide mobile homes are very hard to assess. They do not depreciate like a normal house. They depreciate faster. And on an economic standpoint, sometimes banks don't want to finance them and sometimes they do. We're getting to a point in time where banks are more willing to finance. So therefore, there's more able and willing buyers to purchase. With more buyers, you have a greater demand. And with a greater demand, you're going to have a higher value. That slide that I showed, that showed all the green boxes going into tax rates and bank rates and economic factors are all included in what drives a market. So here I have, it's a lot of data again, I apologize. Two thousand and seven, total value of a hundred and fifty-seven to current in twenty-one of one forty-two seven. So that shows an average change of point six one. If you remember back to the other screen, it shows that Todd County does an average of about three percent increase per year. This kind of illustrates how a double-wide or manufactured home doesn't have the same stability. And that does create more of an up and down on your graph. Taxes are really close to stable in this column. So that's, you know, it's a side effect of the value, but it also shows that the levy and the value do work together. In the middle here, I showed how each individual portion changed. Land went up a very insignificant amount. The house is slowly depreciated. The garage has appreciated with building costs being up. The garage itself has appreciated and the decks actually changed a little bit in the last few years and therefore show a slight increase. Just out of sheer curiosity, I did my parcel as well. Here's my graph. Residential parcel, total opposite corner of the county. I live in Staples. You live by West Union in Little, or excuse me, in Leslie Township. Here's my two thousand and eight. It actually took a little longer to see those decreases in Staples, but when they did, they stayed for about the same amount of time. And now I also have a sharp increase. The sharp increase is my own fault. I did some new construction and am paying accordingly on that. The thing that these two graphs do have in common is they don't match this one. They don't match that red line on that, or the green line, excuse me, on this. Why not? Well, this green line contains seven thousand, six hundred parcels. So you're going to get that, like we had talked about with the sales, you're going to get a smoother trend. When you add in seven thousand, six hundred of your closest neighbors. It does smooth out. It creates a steady property tax as a whole for the board. Individually, you're going to see those ups and downs. Those are not things that we can, we have a control over. I like to think that we're more than just a reporter, but we're reading data and we're reporting back what we find. We are analyzing the data, but we're not creating the data. Everything that we report is something that we should be able to say, because of this, is why that. It's nothing we're making up. We're using cost data that is nationally provided. We're using sales that occur locally. We're following those sales with phone calls to the buyers and the sellers to make sure that the data that was provided was accurate. We are reviewing houses with door knocks on a normal year. This year, it's not quite so easy. But we're not accepting things at face value, but we are, we're reading it. We're not making it up as we go, if you will.
Mr. Chair, Chris, you said earlier, we made that comparison with the city of Staples. To bring it out to the rural area, if I believe I'm correct when I said that you have three classes of land in each township. I think we had just this discussion last year.
Tenable grounders?
I'm saying classes, AV.
So you're talking about tenable ground?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. What would happen if you instead of took township by township, took a district or more of a regional outlook? Would that help with the spiking? Because then you would have more area you were comparing it to. My other follow-up question with that is, do you use each year separate? Or do you do a combination of the past, this year and the past two years? And would that help that level out?
Good questions and it's, we do both. We look at current data and we also compare it to a five-year sales history. When we look at a five-year sales history, it's a weighted history. So we put forty percent of our weight on year one. We do thirty on year two and we bring it back to fifteen percent to still five years old. So we're analyzing data on those smaller markets from up to five years ago. We're not taking as much consideration into it, but we're definitely trending it. And when we look at districts or greater than township areas, we want our neighbors to be close. We don't want Still Prairie to have We don't want Still Prairie to have three thousand dollar land while Bartlett has one thousand dollar land. Um, it's not reasonable. It's not reasonable for a buyer to spend three times as much when he crosses an invisible line. We know that. Um, and I.
But doesn't the land quality make that, that that's actually what's happening?
Right, but that land quality should not change at that invisible township line. It's not gonna just go up in quality because we're now in Moran. So if the land is truly different and the farmers can analyze that, they're gonna know and purchase accordingly regardless of what township they're in.
Yeah, so it should not be township-related then.
But the sale.
It should not be. You know, it should be regional or it should be based on the quality of the land. And not on per se a township.
I agree and vice versa. The sale should reflect the same way. If West Union was identical to Bartlett, they would purchase the same. They don't. Uh, West Union's much higher quality. So I don't need to know that I'm in West Union to look at a s- look at a sale and say, well, this one belongs in West Union. It's four thousand dollars an acre. The sellers are telling me what it's worth in that area. I don't know if a lot of buyers care what side of a township line they're on.
And neither should we really as a county. We should keep, the county should be air boundary.
I don't, I don't know. I understand. Um, our tax laws not.
Different soil types throughout the county. I mean, you'd have, you'd have a mess doing that as a county.
Well, no, there's always been three different major types, correct?
But within, you know, as using that West Union as an example, it's the best we have.
Absolutely.
And then you go towards a Vallard or a Fawn Lake where you're gonna find more rocks than dirt.
Or, and sand.
Yep.
Yeah.
Um, if it was perfect, the buyers would absolutely just tell me what it's worth, but I still have to analyze it by some sort of zoning. Like, otherwise I'm gonna have, how else am I gonna value woods in Bertha compared to?
But don't you, don't you analyze woods and swamps the same way though? You know, if it's, if it's water sitting and cactiels sitting is one.
But it's not just, it's not just one value across the county. And.
I mean, I could see where your, your housing values would bring different values to your land.
And in that same thought, a house is a house is a house. It shouldn't matter if it was built across an invisible line, but that certainly affects the value of the home. Because for whatever reasons are contributed in that, the land value, the house value, the sales values aren't the same from West Union to Vallard. The same house that's built in Long Prairie City is gonna command more money than the exact same house that's built in Staples City or Bertha or Hewitt. Um, that would be one of those economic factors that take into place.
Well, I think we probably should move on. We got a tour yet to do and then we have Union at what, one o'clock? Okay, well, there's a lot of questions. I know a lot of curiosity how this all goes about, but the formulas are sometimes complicated to try and understand, but, uh,
I'm.
We do get the calls and then we try to explain, but if we don't understand, it's hard for us to explain, so.
Chris, would you be willing to do another work session? You know, like in March, April, you know, after? I, I think this is very interesting. I know a lot of people that call us find this very interesting and, and trying to understand what's happening.
Yeah, of course.
Okay.
Okay.
So thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Thank you very much, Chris.
Appreciate it.
Okay, I think that's it, right? So we will adjourn the work session. The board, uh, we did post this, right? The board is going out to tour the, uh, expo building. And then come back and I believe we had union negotiations at one, right? Exciting day. So I'll adjourn the work session.
Is there, is there a lot new to see?